I'd like to call the October 5th, 2017 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. First, we'll begin with an invocation. Ms. Southridge?
Autumn. As summer draws its final breath to prepare its curtain call, the monarchs begin their epic trek to usher in the fall. The northern wind breeze out its chill as songs begin to hush and paints the trees upon the hill with its artist's brush. From green to red, orange and brown, the trees discard their mask and lay them gently upon the ground for us to begin our task. Autumn makes way for winter's rain. We bid farewell, old friend, till summer's warmth begins to wane and fall returns again.
I'd like to ask that we have a moment of silence for those that were affected by the recent hurricanes and also please pray for the victims and families of the Las Vegas tragedy that occurred Sunday night.
Thank you. Next, Central Elementary Principal Carrie Chapel will introduce those who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, our school spotlight is also on Central Elementary. And once again, I'll ask Carrie Chapel to come to the microphone.
Good evening, Chairman Dobney, Superintendent Stefanik, members of the board, staff, parents, and guests. Tonight, Central Elementary School wanted to spotlight our kindergarten pen pal program. This community outreach program has been in place at our school for the last 12 years. Our kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Kathleen Stadler, has been the reason that this program has happened, and I'm now going to turn the microphone over to her for her to give you just a little bit of a background of that before our students present you a very special trip their friend George made last year.
Thank you for letting us share our kindergarten military pen pal program with you. Over the past 13 years, our kindergarten students have had pen pals from all branches of the service. Our pen pals have been stationed in 15 different countries over four continents and have sailed on both Atlantic and Pacific oceans. All of this has given us plenty of wonderful opportunities to learn lots of interesting facts about many different cultures. We've been able to compare foreign currency with our own, observe the differences in writing on a package of M&amp;Ms from Bahrain compared to that that we see in the United States, and our most favorite is to learn the various tooth fairy traditions from around the world. For the past eight years, we have worked with Lieutenant Commander Steven Andros, who is the executive officer of Mobile Diving and Salvage Unit 2. They are based out of Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek, which is in Virginia Beach. Each year, Lieutenant Commander Andros puts us in contact with typically a team of war sailors who are deployed in various places around the world. Students are excited to write letters, draw pictures, make books, and each Friday, we even send emails to each of the pen pals. Monday mornings are always exciting to see that one or all have responded with lots of pictures for us. Each month, we send care packages, which are filled with letters, lots of their favorite goodies, holiday crafts, and tons of love and appreciation. Because of their close proximity to us, it makes it easier for them to come visit us after their deployment. We always look forward to our homecoming parties. Upon their return, we have had opportunities to see and operate firsthand some of the equipment that our pen pals use while on deployment. Their visits with us are always exciting, and our pen pals are always willing to go above and beyond to bring these once-in-a-lifetime opportunities to our kindergarten students at Central Elementary. We have brought a portfolio for you to look through. We hope you enjoy it. We'd like to thank Lieutenant Commander Andros for his support with our pen pal program over the years. I would now like to turn this over to a few of our awesome first-grade Eagle leaders so they can share their pen pal experience from last year.
My name is Elijah Anderson. The picture you see is George. George is the kindergarten class mascot. It was named after President George Washington. In these pictures, George, you see, is George. George is the kindergarten class mascot. George is preparing the care package and is getting ready for his deployment.
My name is KB Hayden. Our pen pals wrote to us and let us know how George was doing. In one letter, our pen pals told us that George doesn't show any fear and is a quick
My name is Ari Mazel. Our mascot, George, got to go diving. Here he is getting ready to go to work.
My name is Madison Mateer. Here is George under the ocean. Our pen pals said that he held his breath for the picture and then went back to breathing using his scuba gear.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Dappel. When George came home, we helped him with false sailors. They showed us the last diving equipment and they talked about their jobs.
How we say the last part? Central Elementary would like to thank all the men and women who keep us safe every day.
Were all of them able to see themselves on TV?
I think that was the goal.
Thank you once again. You did a good job. Next, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Next, public comment session. We did not have anyone sign up, so we'll skip that. Next item, student board member report. Tyler, Colin, and Kealan.
Okay, so first, we have Moyac Elementary. Since MES believes in using stakeholder feedback to strengthen the school, every stakeholder has been involved in the whole school improvement process so far this year, even students. Earlier in September, teachers were challenged to record their classes explaining the growth mindset philosophy or to recite the three Ps: be positive, be proactive, be purposeful. And they came through beautifully. Also in September, MES PTA had their first collaborative meeting of the year to plan the best community fall festival yet. Lots of ideas came out of this, including partnering with several Moyac area vendors to draw in folks from the community. We even have our own classic car show lined up. We invite everyone to come on out and support Moyac Elementary's focus towards innovation when we host our annual fall festival on Friday evening, October 20th, from 5:30 to 8:30. You don't want to miss it. Then, we have Central Elementary. CES had a very successful grandparents' day luncheon with over 100 guests. Our first Title I night had families at the school to fall in love with learning. Families had dinner, made smores, visited the book fair, and had opportunities to receive information about Engage NY Math, reading 3D information, triple P parenting tips, information for new kindergarten families, and Read to Achieve information. During October, we will be celebrating Red Ribbon Spirit Week from October 23rd to 27th and having our annual costume parade on 31st of October at 9:30 in the morning. Come visit Central where we pride ourselves in growing Eagle leaders through the power of yet. So, today was senior portrait retakes at CCMS, and tomorrow is the finale of Spirit Week with Homecoming. Friday's dress-up theme is red out, so show your school spirit with red clothing. Go Knights! Saturday, October 7th, from 7:00 to 15:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., the SAT will be administered at CCHS. Also, Saturday has the Homecoming Dance from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at CCHS. On Wednesday, October 11th, the PSAT will be administered from 8:15 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And then on Thursday, October 12th, the ASVAB will be administered at 8:15 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Tuesday, October 17th, underclassmen make up school pictures will be held. And then on Thursday, October 19th, CCHS Senior Parent Night/FASFA Workshop in Lecture Room A will be held from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Then Monday, October 23rd, CCHS College Day will be held from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. On Monday, October 30th, it is a non-day. So, so excited for Homecoming, and we can't wait to see our Knights on the field. Onto you, Tyler.
Thank you, Kealan. Tonight, I'll be covering Knott's Island Elementary, Jarvisburg Elementary, Kurutuck County Middle School, and Moyac Middle School. From Knott's Island Elementary, on October 27th, there will be a vocabulary walk prior to Knott's Island Annual Fall Festival. The students are excited to put together bean baskets to be auctioned that night during the festival. Knott's Island is also focusing on collecting box tops for the 2017-2018 school year. From Kurutuck County Middle, CCMS is off to a kicking start this year, and we have some great things going on as well as some memorable upcoming events. First, our school dance was a huge success with over two-thirds of our student body in attendance. Our Student of the Month has been reimagined, and we are now honoring our Students of the Month with a T-shirt, and they are pictured on the bulletin board in the front foyer. Tomorrow, in conjunction with PBIS Committee, we'll be reorganizing our students with perfect attendance by giving them an ice cream sundae party. Our athletic teams are off to a great start. Soccer and volleyball teams play on Mondays and Thursdays, the football teams play on Wednesdays, and our golf team plays on Thursdays. Please check out our website for more information and come on out and see us in action. From Moyac Middle, Moyac Middle continues its positive start to the 2017-2018 academic year. Our first dance of the year was held on Friday, September 22nd, and we had a great turnout, dancing and enjoying time with friends. Both athletics and school clubs are off to positive starts. Football, soccer, golf, volleyball, and cheerleading are in full swing. We currently have 97 athletes participating in these five fall sports. The Friends of Rachel or Four Club is kicking off its membership drive. This club promotes kindness within our school. We currently have 42 students who have shown initial interest. FBLA has started strong with 63 members. We are planning to participate in several regional conferences and are currently playing the stock market game. In late October, FBLA will begin its annual Thanksgiving food drive. Science Olympiad has kicked off its 13th year, or 13 students for this year. We currently have 40 students, so it's going on for 13 years, interested in joining the team. We will compete in the regional event at East Carolina University in February. We are hoping to place at this level as well as bring home the Spirit Award for Best Sportsmanship for the second year in a row. We are very busy at MMS. And finally, from Jarvisburg Elementary. If I can pull it up. Our Title I Reading Night had a record-breaking turnout on September 14th. Our fantastic teachers led discussions for parents on a variety of topics dealing with literacy integration. We are in full swing with our Monday morning school meetings where we celebrate our previous week, share student-created materials, celebrate outstanding leaders of the week, and reinforce our PBIS Matrix for School-wide Behavioral Expectations. The staff participated in a school-wide professional development half-day with the focus being on rigorous vocabulary. Our first learning walk took place on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, with much success. The MTSS process is heading into high gear, and our teachers have met during PLCs to gather this year's baseline data as we work to meet the needs of all of our students. In an effort to reach out and better communicate with our non-English-speaking families, we developed a Spanish outline for four and a half weeks' worth of progress to be sent home with these students. October will include a visit by the Mobile Dental Clinic, Red Ribbon Week, and our kindergarten's annual learning trip to Morris Farm Market. Our students are making a difference every day, and our students are proud to say, "I am smart, I am strong, I am loved." JES students rise above. With that, I turn over to Colin.
Today, I'm going to be talking about Griggs Elementary, Shawboro Elementary, and JP Nap Early College. Griggs Elementary, our grandparents' day luncheon and book fair were a huge success, and we had our first PBIS Reward Day for students on Friday, September 29th. Students were able to choose an outdoor or indoor activity if they had at least 80% positive dojo points. Griggs will be recognizing Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd to 27th. Students will participate in a bookmark contest and other fun activities during that week. Our second nine-weeks PBIS Day will be October 27th. Students will participate in our third annual book character costume day on October 31st. From Shawboro Elementary, our Title I night was a huge success. Teachers facilitated discussions and sessions between staff and parents about the curriculum, communication, and support that Shawboro offers students. Our attendance was increased by 98% from last year. Third grade took their BOG reading test. The kids worked hard and are excited to grow this year. October 20th will host a fall festival for our families and community members from 5 to 7. There will be lots of activities and games. We will also participate in Red Ribbon Week activities the week of October 23rd, including having officers from Kurutuck County Sheriff's Department K-9 Unit speaking to the students on staying drug-free. From JP Nap Early College, the FAFSA process opened October 1st. All 2018 graduates need to go online and complete their FAFSA process. It has been a wonderful Spirit Week at JP Nap, thanks to Mr. Martin and the SGL. Tomorrow is the end of our first nine-weeks grading period. The month of October is transfer month in seminar classes. JP Nap Early College will be holding its first-ever Transfer Summit tomorrow for students in grades 11, 12, and 13. The Transfer Summit has been designed to educate students and staff on the actual process of transferring college credits to a four-year university. Monday, October 9th, is job shadowing day for 10th graders and a teacher work day. JP Nap Beta Club induction ceremony will be held Tuesday, October 10th, at 6:00 p.m. in the cafeteria. All 11th graders will be taking the PSAT on Wednesday, October 11th, from 8:20 to 11:30 a.m. Parent conferences will be held on Tuesday, October 17th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Parents can meet with individual teachers from 4:00 to 4:50. Then, we'll follow their students' daily schedule from 4:50 to 5:30. Finally, we meet in the gym for a general information session on changes at college level from 5:30 to 6:00 p.m. Pre-ACT for all 10th graders will be on Wednesday, October 18th, from 8:20 to 11:30 a.m. Picture makeup day is Friday, October 20th. We will be holding a school improvement team meeting on Friday, October 20th. Beta Club will be sponsoring their Halloween blood drive on Tuesday, October 31st. And that is all we have for the school spotlight.
Tyler, Colin, and Kealan, thank you very much for your reports. Next item, field trip request. Superintendent Stefanik?
Thank you, Dr. Dobney, board members. Just want to make one comment. I know they're having Spirit Week at the high school, and I heard that there were picture retakes. I'm sure that's an interesting combination, you know, going out to high schools, so I just, that seemed funny to me, so I just figured I'd share that with everybody. One field trip request was granted. Our band members have a chance to participate in Alder District Band in Winston-Salem on November 10th through the 12th. It's a great weekend musical experience for our high school band members.
Okay, next, 2017-18 budget adoption. Lori Trussell, Finance Officer.
Good evening. We're here tonight to hopefully get the 1718 budget approved. It includes an appropriation of $25 million in the state public school fund, $11.1 million in the local current expense fund, $1.8 million in the federal grant fund, $1.7 million in the capital outlay fund, $1.9 million in the child nutrition fund, and $1.1 million in the other local fund, for a grand total of close to $43 million. There are revenue appropriations to support the expenditures, highlights that we went over earlier in the work session. The 1718 budget accounts for principal and assistant principal salary increases. However, the local budget contains a cut of two assistant principals, however, the decrease to the prior year's budget equated to $9,700 due to the salary increases, which means we cut two assistant principals, but we used all of that cut except for $9,700 to fund principals and assistant principals because the raises were substantial. They were much, much due. They had been several years without raises, but it took that much money. The budget includes a special...
Sorry, excuse me, Lori. Just to do a comparison, there's like $9,000 left out of approximately $150,000 by cutting two assistant principals, and the raises, you know, again, much, much needed, but the budget cut pretty much disappeared with the raises that were given.
Sorry.
Thank you. I knew I wasn't explaining it very well. It reflects a special legislated yellow bus driver pay increase of 92 cents. That's a special allotment that we received that had to be used on bus drivers. It contains state-mandated certified instructional staff pay raises, as well as $83.33 per month or $0.48 per hour raises for all classified and central office administrative staff. It includes retirement and hospitalization rate increases. Retirement went from a blended rate last year. The rate changed mid-year of 16.33% to 17.13%, and hospitalization also had a blended rate last year of $5,659 per employee to $5,869 per employee. By the end of the year, the local fund balance is projected to be $835,000. So, we've appropriated about $821,000 in the local budget this year. So, if we use about the same amount of fund balance next year, you will be out of the local fund balance, which is a bad situation. There's been many cuts made to the local budget this year to try to slow down the demand on the fund balance, but we are running out of fund balance. I think I gave a bet, copies of the chart of accounts, so you can have that tonight. And are there any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. I also received this purchase order. I guess it's a breakdown for different purchase orders?
Mm-hmm.
I just got two questions. One of them says, "Kurutuck County Water Department blanket for water bills." And it's got amount appropriated and that amount that's utilized thus far. Is that we're buying water from the county?
Yes.
Okay. And then, COA bookstore textbook purchases, $50,000 amount. We've actually invoiced $53,389.
We've already used up that purchase order. We get funding for the early college, and they purchase textbooks from COA, and it's a huge amount of money each year. The high school uses funds too, but that PO is for early college. They've already used up their $50,000. They'll have to do another purchase order for the second semester, but they are required. Those students taking classes at COA have to have their books and their little key that they get to go online. And they've tried to cut cost, but you know how when you're going, taking a college class, you have to have their materials?
No, yes, ma'am. And I just wanted to understand, and I don't think this should be without the materials at all, and I'm not just saying that this is a bad purchase or ill amount. I just want to correlate that we're spending a large amount of money on textbooks for college courses, and then I wanted to talk about textbook purchases for the elementary level and the middle schools. And I want to know, did we spend more money this year than last year on textbooks in elementary school, particularly for math?
That would be a curriculum question. I don't know that off the top of my head. There's almost 3,000 lines in the budget. I counted that up today. I looked at it, and it totals it by fund, but I don't know that. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yes, ma'am, but maybe by utilizing this now, I could possibly go through and make my own comparison and determination, unless somebody could answer that question. I'm not asking, trying to pin you down. What I'm trying to do is understand, and without that piece of information, it's hard for anybody to really understand where that money went. Right? How it's being spent?
Which money?
The whole budget. If you don't have this uniform chart of accounts, North Carolina public schools, to identify each line, you can't really know where it was spent. I mean, there's a little blip of information beside it, but really, you have to have this to understand where the money really went, right? In the 3,000 lines?
If you look at the source, each code does have a title, but there's nothing in there that's going to tell you how many math textbooks were bought. That would be something we'd have to query the schools.
Okay.
Or go back and do a purchase order search.
And I will do that with the curriculum folks and the building administrators and find out what we purchased this year compared to last year.
That's fine. I just, you know, I got sent a copy of the budget. I didn't have the coding device to be able to read the budget, and now I'm here, I'm supposed to vote for the budget. Nothing against you, nothing against the numbers that are in there, whether I agree with them or not, just saying it's kind of hard to vote and approve a budget when you didn't have the device to be able to understand the budget. That's my only problem.
Didn't you say that you had one from five years ago?
I had one from 2013. I didn't know it applied to 2017-18.
Well, it doesn't change. Well, did you ask anybody?
Did anybody think that maybe Ms. Rosen that never had one at all might be interested in knowing that?
All y'all had to do was ask, and we would've got your copy. And I apologize.
Yes, ma'am. She didn't even know the daggone thing existed. She didn't even know what to ask for, with all due respect. All right.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion for approval?
I motion that we approve the budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would like to have a little more time to look over it now that I have this codebook. I'm sorry, I did not even know that existed. That's just my thoughts. I'm not experienced like the rest of you.
Your fault. Can we go without?
Yeah, what would happen if we don't approve the budget?
Oh, sure, we have a continuation budget anyway, right now. What kind of a bind would it put you in if we waited another month since we already have a continuation budget?
I'm trying to think of all the rules. I mean, this budget's already posted, and we're, you understand that, we're already operating with it.
That's right.
And it's, it's a budget to actual, we've gone through and pulled, that's why we're, we're later each year doing it. We've gone through and pulled the queries that we get of all the people, and every person is budgeted for. So, and then what's left goes to supplies and different operations. And this year it was a struggle, and this is probably why we overlooked putting the chart of accounts with it. It was a struggle just to get the local budget balanced.
Well, let me ask you this. If I have time to, when I, once I go back through and I understand it a little better, is it's possible to amend the budget?
Sure.
As she said earlier, it's, this is basically a guideline that we're working with.
Okay.
It's not etched in stone.
That's true.
These numbers are target numbers. Am I correct, Lori, that, that based on previous years and what we have spent our allocation for different things, it's a guideline? And so anything can be changed, or if we have any questions concerning the budget, or we're above budget or below budget, it's not something that we have to follow by the penny.
That's true. And I'll use the example of the drug dog earlier, just because I put $3,000 there, I really don't know-
That's right.
-the rules of the drug dog. I'm sitting over there in a separate building, and I don't always know everything, so I try to budget for the worst-case scenario.
Right.
And that, if, if no bill comes over, I mean, Yvette and Mr. Stefanik send over the purchase order when something comes up. And so if no more bills come over, there will be no, no more money moved out of that line. And if we need that line item for something else towards the end of the year, it can be moved, but um-
Same way with bad weather, as far as cold weather, if we, our electric bill is more, and it's something that-
E-rate funding. There are so many variables to the budget. It changes every day. We, we receive money, we, they take back money. It's always evolving. And even this budget that I did, that was only so for the day that we printed it. I'm sure something has already changed.
How many budget amendments did you receive from the state last year, approximately?
Oh, 50-something.
I was going to say, every month we had-
We're on number 13 for this year already, and we just finished the first full month of school, and there have been 13 state amendments already.
Yeah, with 3,000 line items, it's almost impossible to be-
On the penny.
Right on the penny for every line item. It's subject to change, and we just need to go with, with that and have some type of guideline. And I don't think Lori's asking us to say, okay, well, you said $3,000 for the dog, and it came in at 2,000. You know, that's not what it's all about, so.
Right, and except for restricted funds that we can't transfer, we can use the other funds and, on as-needed basis with line items.
I, I realize that these numbers fluctuate, and, and I realize you have a really tough job predicting and guestimating and using a hypothesis as to what it might be. I, but you got, you know, versed experience that you're putting, you know, in this, and so we value that. But by the same token, if we're already operating under this budget, pretty much, this is our guideline, then if we didn't approve it right now, and we still were operating it under it next month, would it be any different? I mean, are we, is there some kind of timeline requirement by the state that we wouldn't be adhering to that I don't understand, or I don't, I don't quite understand if we're already operating under it, and we'd like to review it with this device, what the issue is?
Well, one thing comes to mind, the auditor has already asked me for the fund balance appropriated numbers, and he puts those in the audit, and he's in a timeline deadline this year. He's just come around to start, start working on our budget, I mean, on our audit. He has to be totally done by December 1st, submitted to LGC and everything, and traditionally, that's not what's been happening. So I wouldn't want to hold up his printing for the fund balance appropriated. We could certainly, if you all questioned something and you decided you didn't like it, we could, we could discuss it and move it if, if possible. But so much of this is already obligated towards personnel and benefits. There's not short of letting people go. I don't know, there's not that much excess funds available.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the only, the auditor, last year he was waiting for me to get it done so he could, could finish his audit.
And that happens because the state doesn't appropriate the funds and have everything together, which is why we're late on doing it anyway, right?
Well, I really have to wait until we get the first teacher payroll run in August, because that's the bulk of your, your money. And we're usually finishing hiring by then. We've got all our, all our positions filled. This year we were a little late, but we were very careful because the budget's so tight to keep a list, and we talked to Ann, we talked to Mr. Stefanik, to make sure we weren't forgetting someone and overlooking a position that needed to be budgeted. That's the main reason for waiting. It's not, there's not enough time with such an early September board meeting to have it complete any earlier. It took a month to do this.
Right.
It's a lot of work.
Now, would the board be willing to go ahead, pass the budget, and then once you look, and Will looks, if there's any questions, bring that up the next work session?
Sure.
If we can talk about it or vote on it.
Meeting if we need to. If, if time is of the essence, if we need to call a special meeting within a week or 10 days, we can certainly do that.
I, I think all of those are reasonable suggestions. I, I only have one follow-up, and I, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but if, for example, the man, the fellow that does the audit, okay, and he does his audit with a certain amount of fund balance, and then we have a amendment within this board or, or the state that possibly changes that number, how does that affect the audit? I'm just curious.
He would, well, it could change. We could have an emergency come up in, in February or March, and we have to pull out some more fund balance. And, but it would be the first budget generally that would be used in the audit. Because we can always, like, like Ms. Etheridge said, we can always amend the budget until June 30th. That's your last day to do it. That's why we have the board meeting on June 30th, so that I've got time to make sure we've appropriately covered all of our expenditures, and the right purpose codes and the right function codes, so that we don't get a, written up for using, for having expenditures that we did not have budget to cover. That's, that's a big deal.
Okay. Okay, so could you put that on the next work session agenda, Yvette? Or we'll answer any other, deal with any other questions after Mr. Kratic and Ms. Rose looks?
And if it would be possible, I'd love to get your questions ahead of time so that we could be prepared, because-
Yes, ma'am.
-it's not all up here.
Yes, ma'am.
I have files of data.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval of the 2017-18 school budget. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Dr. Dobney?
Yes.
While Ms. Trussell's standing here, I'd just like to recognize Lori in the Finance Department, because there really, really is a lot of information that comes in and out of that office. And, you know, I imagine during this first month while they're trying to put the budget together, and then another amendment email comes from the state, then they have to go back and do something else all over again, and then re-track, you know, the money. And we've told the commissioners and the community, sometimes those amendments, good amendments, you know, we end up with some money coming our way, but several times there are amendments that go the other way. And so they're, they're doing the adding and the subtracting and just trying to get everything square, you know, to some point. And I think it was yesterday or Monday, we had the 13th amendment, you know, just come while we're preparing for this board meeting. And so the state, you know, things occur down there, and then they notify us anytime it affects our, our state monies, and it just keeps happening. I think we may have hit 60 last year, to tell you the truth, because I remember 55, and they just kept on, the emails kept on coming. So they do a nice job over there keeping track of the money. And this year with the reductions, and then she would call me and say, remember that reduction? The raises took it. Remember this? And this happened. And so it was, there were a lot of conversations, making sure that we could keep the educational program together and not have to get down to cuts that said, these students can't take this class, or they can't participate in this course anymore. We don't ever want to get to that point.
Yeah. Lori, please share with your staff how much we appreciate all the hard work that you've done, because I know that they were there at our work session, but please share with them how, how much we appreciate it.
Thank you. I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, superintendent contract extension. Like a motion to extend Mr. Stefanik's contract to June 30th, 2021?
From, from, from what date is it current to, to expire?
You'd have, Mark, when's your current expiration?
June 30th, 2020.
Okay. So this would extend it a year?
One year. One year.
I make a motion that we extend it to the, for the year.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I'd personally like to wait until we hired the new superintendent, because as we've talked about, they're gonna-
New assistant superintendent.
That's what I meant, excuse me. The new assistant superintendent, I apologize, so that we have time to determine if we want to give that person a four-year contract right out the gate, because I understand that they're going to be parallel contract time links, and their contract can't exceed his at any point in time.
Well, now, if we're gonna parallel theirs to his, they wouldn't get four years, they'd get two and a half, right?
I understand that.
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
Yeah. It's a difference between two and a half and three and a half.
I see.
Yeah.
And I don't see any reason that we need to do that right now. So I'd ask that we do that after a short, I don't know, what, six months after we have that person in place to determine if we think that's the route we want to go.
Well, I think he needs to be able to tell whoever he hires as his assistant superintendent what the length of their contract would be.
Longer than six months.
No, I wouldn't say that their contract would be six months, because if he hired him, their contract would be through his contract date, which doesn't expire until 2020. I said we should have like a little six-month window after hiring him with a contract that expires in 2020 before we extend his out, which would equate to extending theirs out.
Well, I'd still like to move that we approve his contract through June 30th, 2021, because when we didn't extend it the last time, he became the first superintendent since probably 1995 not to have his contract extended for an additional year, and all the rest of the superintendents did. I think it shows support for the superintendent and the good job that we feel he's doing.
I agree.
I think he's doing a great job. My concern is that we're bringing in a high-level person, and we're going to offer him a four-year contract right out the gate before we determine that that's the exact person that we want. That's why I recommend that we wait six months after they are hired to make that determination. Has nothing to do with what we think. Mark's job has got to do with the new person coming in who we don't know their job in that capacity, and aligning a contract for four years instead of, what?
Three and a half versus two and a half.
Yeah, it'd be two and a half originally.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay, so we give him a two-and-a-half-year contract instead of a three-and-a-half-year contract right out the gate. That's, that's my only concern.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we extend the superintendent's contract to June 30th, 2021? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes? Okay, next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next information items. Next work session will be Thursday, November 2nd, at the NAP Professional Learning Center at 4:00. Next Board of Education meeting will be Thursday, November 2nd, right here.
Is that correct? 4 o'clock? No, early meeting?
Not right now.
Not at this time. We'll let you know.
Some items may come-
It'll probably change.
Subject to change.
Really? Okay, board member and superintendent's comments. We'll start with Mr. Stefanik, so I don't forget him.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney, and thank you for the board for the year's extension. I appreciate that. When we talk to the new assistant superintendent, be glad to offer them an extended contract and, and see what work we can get done as the new team at the central office. Got an awards announcement, and officially, these awards will come at another board meeting, but anytime you get good emails, you want to share them as, as fast as you get them. We had eight schools in the Kirtuk County School District that were recognized by the state for their PBIS programs, which are positive behavior supports and, and work that they're doing to create a positive climate for their students. We've got Kirtuk County High School, I believe it's called a Green Ribbon Award, which is the second highest that you can get. Jarvisburg with a Green Ribbon Award, Shawboro with a Green Ribbon Award, Knott's Island with a Green Ribbon Award, WT Griggs Elementary with a Green Ribbon Award. And then these final three are listed as model schools, and that's the highest award that can be given to a school for their PBIS program, and that would be Central Elementary, Kirtuk Middle, and Moayak Elementary. So congratulations to all those schools for the quality work they're doing to create positive learning environments for our students on a day-to-day basis.
Great, thank you. Anything else, or?
That's enough.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? Actually, one more. Not just that.
Of course.
Not just that. Well, I didn't want to give two things before the field trip, so I gave one, I gave the high school with the Spirit Day and picture retakes, and how appreciative the parents would be if their, you know, students wearing their costume and their picture retakes, that'd be good. But the other one is Central Elementary broke new ground with their Title I night, and really has nothing to do with their Title I night, but they had, when they made the samours, they went all out, and they had a fire pit at the school so they could roast the marshmallows. And that one activity caused us no less than to check with the fire department, the fire marshal, our insurance company, you know, to make sure that we had everything in, in line. And the irony of the whole thing, where Ms. Chapel wanted to have the fire pit was within feet of a water source. And we weren't allowed to have it there, because it was too close to the walls of the school, so then we had to have it somewhere where there was no water source, and so Ms. Chapel was walking around with a portable fire extinguisher in her hand, making sure that, that nothing happened out in the, in the parking lot. So I heard the night went really well, the kids got excited about the, the samours, and it was a, a good turnout, and congratulations to Central for that Title I night and that innovative idea, I guess, to draw people in.
Have they made you an honorary fireman now? Okay, next, Ms. Etheridge?
Yes, Tuesday morning, the board met at Kirtuk County High School, and I'd like to thank Don Monroe for coordinating a very informative CTE tour that was held on Tuesday. And he gave us all a pamphlet, and I wanted to read the mission statement. The mission statement of career and technical education is to empower all students to be successful citizens, workers, and leaders in a global economy. And this is a quote, "The average high school graduation rate for students who completed CTE pathway concentration is 93% compared to an average national freshman graduation rate of 80%." And some of the things that, that we offer are just unbelievable, and I don't know if the public or the parents know the different career paths that their, their child could attend.
We have, of course, agricultural, education, business, finance, food services, health services, health sciences, marketing, construction, media design, Microsoft Tech Academy, automotive, public safety, EMT, firefighter, technologies, and automotive. And I just want to tell Mr. Monroe, we appreciate everything that you do and all of the other, the staff at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Craft?
Yes, I visited all the schools this month. Got to a volleyball game at Kirtuk County High School. I also just can't thank you enough for this CTE tour. I was very jealous that I never had those opportunities when I was in high school. There was a lot of hands-on learning going on, a lot of, every student that I talked to had positive things to say. So I thought it was really good. The FFA had a fishing tournament this past weekend, Water Lily. And I went to the weigh-in. I didn't fish. Bill fished, he'll tell you about that. But Daniel Meads and Missy Swain did an excellent job with this fundraising event. And I just want to commend them for that. This afternoon, at our work session, Donna Gregory, one of our English teachers, spoke to us about her appreciation for treating her like a professional by giving her the opportunity, giving the high school the opportunity to have the half-day Fridays where they were able to collaborate and work with each other to enhance the learning of the students. She wanted to thank us and just gave us really positive information about why it was so important to her and what it had meant to her. So I was really appreciative of that. And finally, I was in Knott's Island and one of the kindergarten group and I think it was first grade, was, were writing letters to their pen pals. And I said, "Well, where do these pen pals live?" And they were like, "Across the water." "Well, of course, Knott's Island." I said, "Well, I just came across the water." "Where?" "Jarvisburg." So they found out that I was coming to Jarvisburg the next day. And so they told me to send them a message. So I went to Jarvisburg. The kids there were like, "Oh, you went, you saw them? We haven't met them yet." They're going to meet them in the spring. So anyway, great, great month in Kirtuk.
Thank you. Mr. Kratic?
Yes, I was very impressed with the tour that Ms. Monroe provided us with the career training, education. There was a lot going on. And there was skills that, no matter what path those students choose to take in life, that they will carry with them forever. And so I'm very thankful that we have those in place. I was made aware of a lot of things that I hadn't been aware of that were available to students at this high school in Kirtuk. And I'd just like to say that I had a younger sister that went into a nursing program in high school and graduated out of ALPN, went on to be RN. And this past summer, she graduated as an anesthesiologist. So I have great respect for you and your staff and what you're doing. And I'd like to figure out ways to expand upon it and improve upon it. And I really am thankful that you made that possible for us to come out and that you make it possible for those students to have all those opportunities. And thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
Well, Mr. Monroe, I too appreciate the tour you set up for us. Having a daughter involved in the program, I know firsthand how wonderful it is. FFA is doing a tremendous job getting ready for their national convention that's coming up. They're raising lots of money to send twelve students to Indianapolis. I've attended a football game and saw our Knights play, saw them in action, and some volleyball. And I've had lunch at Knott's Island with Ms. Roach's first-grade class. I see a lot of great things going on in their schools and I'm proud of their system.
Thank you. I too was on the CTE tour and appreciate everything our, you know, CTE teachers do, you know, for the kids. And I was really pleased to see how excited the kids are in every one of those classes. It was really nice. Received a letter from the Department of Public Instruction. It says, "I am pleased to announce that Emily McDonald, kindergarten classroom at Jarvisburg Elementary, has been selected to participate as a North Carolina Demonstration Program classroom administered by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's Office of Early Learning." So congratulation to Emily McDonald. I visited Moyac Elementary, Moyac Middle School, Kirtuk Middle School. I also watched parts of the two-girls golf matches. We do have a girls' golf team, I don't know how many people realize that. And then as Ms. Craft said, I fished in the FFA tournament and I realized why I don't fish in tournaments any longer. Did catch three fish, but I had to get up at three-thirty in the morning. I didn't realize I was still part of the...
Exactly. I got invited to and I said, "That's not my kind of activity."
So with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.